Pleasure and privilege that I sit before you today. This beautiful Tuesday, April 24th of 2018. The time is 6:28. I call this meeting to order. We'll start with our invocation by Ms. Diana Lopez, followed by the pledge of allegiance. If Ms. Cynthia would lead us. Thank you. Please rise.
If we can all bow our head and ask for God's blessings. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your blessings and guidance as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and collaboration. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Give us the desire to find ways to excel in our work, help us to work together, and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that you would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best that we can be. And we ask this in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands
Moving on to agenda item number two, citizen comments and public announcements. Looks like we have no citizen comments today. Ms. Carrasco, you have any public announcements?
I'm listening.
Mr. Burke?
No ma'am.
Mr. Crisp?
Not today.
Okay. Going on to agenda item number three. Here's status report from city manager concerning A, City of Alice Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2017, and B, update on the sale of city-owned property under the provisions of Local Government Code 253.001, specifically Harkins Industrial Park and 3001 Old Kingsville Road, the Old Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you, Mayor. On the audit, once again, I actually spoke to the partner at the firm who's actually conducting the audit himself, and he's been working on it diligently. He, in discussions with him and with our staff, they're doing a standard audit, but with that standard audit, they're doing, they're asking for a lot more information than they've ever asked before. Last year, they did this audit, and it was, once again, a standard audit. But they're also looking at, he called it unpredictable procedures. So he's asking questions, kind of like, your standard audit will ask certain questions, and now he's asking different questions on receivables that maybe they don't typically ask, so we can find, so they can find any holes or potential holes in how we're doing some of the accounting. So they're doing a real thorough job. They're also, an example of what they're asking for is, you know, we tell them that the airport is ours, and we're spending money out there, and he's like, okay, I need to see the deed as well. So they're asking for information. He said that he was going to get a preliminary to roll in today, but we were still going to meet the GFOA deadline to submit this for excellence in accounting. He was going to have that done by the 30th. So it's still in works, but I have confidence that they're doing a really good job on it, and he'll have some really good recommendations for us. On the sale of city-owned property, Harkins Industrial Park, and as well as those used to be called, kind of, the soccer fields as well, the Old Kingsville Road, which was the Old Boys and Girls Club, they were out for bid, and we didn't receive any bids for those. So we will be bringing this back to see how you guys want to proceed on the sale of that, whether we will extend it, whether we'll do an auction, or whether we'll just list them. But this will be coming back as an agenda item for you guys at the next meeting.
Thank you. Agenda item number four. Here presentation from Carlisle Insurance Benefits Consultant for the City of Alice related to the City of Alice Group Health Insurance Benefits and discuss, consider, and act upon the issuance of requests for proposals for the City of Alice Employee Benefits Program for the following insurance services or insurance coverages. And we're going to separate into two motions. One will be A, self-insured medical and pharmacy, including stop-loss insurance, administrative services only, third-party administrative services, pharmacy benefit manager, employee assistance program, provider networks for medical and pharmacy, wellness, chronic disease management, COBRA administration, and telehealth. And then B, fully insured group dental insurance, and C, fully insured voluntary vision insurance, and D, group term life insurance, and E, voluntary supplemental life insurance for the City of Alice employees, including authorizing Carlisle Insurance Benefits Consultant for the City of Alice to coordinate the RFP process, evaluate the proposals, and provide financial cost analysis of the proposals to the city council for consideration at a future meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we will be asking for two separate motions after the presentation, a motion for A, and then a motion for B, C, D, and E, if you all so choose to go out for these. Our city clerk, Diane Lopez, has been dealing with the benefits for a long time, so she's going to have a small narrative on where we are, and kind of where we, how we got to where we are, and then Carlisle, the Carlisle Group will come up with a couple of slides, and also their analysis of where we need to go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In fiscal year 2014, the City of Alice changed their medical and pharmacy platform from a fully insured platform to a fully funded self-insured platform. I'm happy to report that in the years that we have been doing this, we've been very successful at it. On the high end, we were paying upwards of $658 per month per employee for premiums for medical coverage. For fiscal year 2018, we are now at $518 per employee. Those reductions in rates have not only benefited the budgets and our taxpayers, but we've been able to pass those savings on to employees who carry dependent care. The health insurance reserve fund that we have, we fund into it every month with the premiums that we have set aside, and from there, we're paying claims. Anything else is left in reserves. And as of today, I'm happy to report that we have approximately $1.6 million in that reserve. This is working very well, and as we proceed forward with the next round of budget considerations and talks, it's time for us to bring to the council the request for proposals. This evening, there will be two proposals for your consideration. The first will be for Employee Benefits Program, our medical insurance. This is on the fully insured, self-funded platform. And a second request for proposal for the ancillary products, which are dental, vision, and life. This year, we have Carlisle Insurance Agency, who is acting as our benefits consultant through this process. This evening, we have present with us Mr. Zach Gingrich, Ms. Valeria Ivada, and Mr. Ted Bearden. Carlisle Insurance, as you all know, is a local consulting and insurance firm. They've been in business for over 90 years. And their responsibilities as our consultant include day-to-day servicing issues. They also do one-on-one employee and new hire enrollments. They do claims and network analysis. They contract and review our negotiations. They will be conducting the RFP process, and also a best and final offer process. They make recommendations on plan changes and designs, and of course, make sure that we are in compliance and conduct our open enrollments. This year, the plans that we have in place for medical, we are not proposing any changes to them. There are still our base plan of a $2,500 calendar year deductible for employees only, $40 copays in 2040 and '60 for pharmacy. Employees still have an option of buying up to a lower deductible, which will also get them a lower copay and lower copays on the pharmacy. I'll, at this point, turn it over to Mr. Gingrich, and he will walk you all through it, and of course, answer any questions that any of the council may have.
Diana, good afternoon, or good evening, Council. It's good to see everybody again. I think we were out here last September when we were awarded the consulting contract. Tonight, we want to keep it real brief. I think that it's already been alliterated that we do recommend that we do go for an RFP process for all the lines of coverage. Essentially, in a nutshell, with all the lines that we're recommending, that we advertise for, it really will be a top to bottom of your entire employee benefits coverage, all the way from, as we mentioned, network down to the group dental and the group vision. So, real briefly, as I mentioned, I do want to keep it short. We are a local firm. My personally office is out of Corpus Christi. Valerie's out of Corpus Christi as well. Ted's here in Alice, so we are a local firm with a wealth of knowledge of our local health systems, both here in Alice, and as I'm sure most people are aware, in Corpus Christi, because that is where a lot of your employees are accessing healthcare. So we bring that to the table of our knowledge of the local providers, of local health systems. Being a local firm, though, we do deal with a handful of municipalities. Within last year, we dealt with over $30 million of public entity, all the way from school district to counties to municipalities. So we're very familiar with this process. We understand the importance of your health insurance to your employees. So as Diana mentioned, our goal is to not change benefits, but we do want to go to market to see and ensure that the most competitive option is being offered to your employees alone. So our responsibilities have already, she already ran through our responsibilities, really, within the coming months, as we're recommending to go out for an RFP. This is really our time to really be hands-on, and we're going to be very, very active within the next couple of months as things are advertised. It is our goal to, essentially, if you will, kind of quarterback this whole process to relieve the work off your own staff, to really, you know, have us handle working with the carriers and the analysis that actually goes into the coverages. Real quick, just as a reminder of where you guys are currently at, the health insurance is administered by a third-party administrator called Healthcare Highways. You guys are buying access to the SPAH healthcare network, which we're all very familiar with, the SPAH healthcare network. So this is where our employees go access healthcare within a preferred provider arrangement with the SPAH network, which includes other providers outside of SPAH. The group dental insurance and the group vision insurance is with Humana, which is a very large ancillary carrier, very prominent here in South Texas as well. And lastly, the group life insurance is with Airborne National. All very reputable companies. Healthcare Highways, I think, has done a great job, but nonetheless, we do feel that by going out to bid this summer, that we'll ensure that you're getting the best price, and possibly, we can find a better price, is our hope. Again, we don't want to make changes to the current benefit structure. They're very rich. I can assure you, we work with multiple municipalities surrounding Alice, and you guys do offer a very rich plan. So it will be our intention to drive prices down with the hope of no disruption to the employees. As she mentioned, we are a consultant. So all the proposals that we receive will be net commission. This provides a significant savings to the city, as usually, commission-loaded rates are much higher. You know, we've been in business 90 years. We practice a very strong business, and we wouldn't be in business that long without practicing transparency, and that's our goal here, is that, our goal is to purely provide the best rate for the best coverage at the lowest rate. And again, that transparency with the consulting fee, that is our goal when that was arranged. So all proposals that we do receive will be net commissions for any servicing agent. Lastly, in closing, the next slide. We do want to give just a quick snapshot. I do want to start off with saying this is purely a projection. What we're doing is we're analyzing claims for the plan year. You guys are on October 1st renewal date. We do have data through February 2018, so we're looking at about five months. What we do in these situations is we do what we call annualizing the claims data. We look at where you've been the past five months. We try and project it going into the next 12 months. So these are projections. They are subject to change throughout the summer, throughout the coming months. Year-to-date, you guys are running about $840,000 in medical and pharmaceutical claims. So that's both doctor's offices, hospital visits, all the way to filling the prescription after CVS Pharmacy. If we project this out over the rest of the claim year, we do project about $2 million in claims. The health insurance is self-funded, and self-funding means just that you do pay claims. As we mentioned, the reserve, you do pay claims as they incur. So these projections are always subject to change. We can't predict. We hope not, but you know, car accident, emergency room, that ends up being a $40,000 claim. We cannot predict that. But what we can do is ensure that protection is in place. And thankfully, that is what the City of Alice has done long before us, and to this year, we're predicting this is going to be very beneficial. With the self-insured plan, I know the word "self-insure" can raise a little bit of concern, but there is levels of protection that are implemented to ensure that the city is not looking at the end of the year owing a handful of funds. You do purchase what's called aggregate protection. Essentially, what that is, is a cap as a whole, should claims, as an aggregate, a whole of the city exceed a certain level. Your aggregate protection for this past year that was purchased back in October is $1.6 million. Obviously, going back to the left, we're predicting claims could exceed that $1.6 million. The good news is, going to the right, that $9,900 is what you guys paid for that protection. Looking at that very last slide, that's about $350,000 that the city is not going to be liable for. So again, the concept is, you think self-insured, and there's a level of uncertainty, and there definitely is. But our goal is, and what the staff had done a great job before us, is ensuring that there is that level of protection. We hope not. We'll see how the rest of the plan year plays out, but nonetheless, that protection was in place, and you are protected this coming year. So as I mentioned, our scope of service is, is we're going to put a full analysis together. We're going to look at and hopefully receive proposals from a lot of the big names that you understand, Blue Cross, United, Aetna, not understand, but names you're familiar with, and continue to look at some smaller TPA's such as Healthcare Highways that do a great job. They're very hands-on, very customer service-oriented. So our goal is to really approach the market, make sure that we receive proposals from numerous carriers, provide analysis and the cost analysis of what that means for the city, what that means for your budget, and ultimately, why it's in place, what it means for your employees, and continue to make sure it's a competitive offer to your employees. But in a nutshell, again, we just wanted to be out here and let you guys know that with, given the motion tonight and what's approved, our hope is, within the next couple of months, we get to roll our sleeves up and really go to work for the city and hopefully provide some savings for everybody.
Thank you. Any questions, Council?
Well, one thing is, we are bringing this early on, because in the past, this has always been brought on kind of late, and it's been rushed, and we made a conscious effort to get this on air quickly, so we won't be trying to finalize the numbers right before budget, or also, on the other hand, is trying to enroll people. When you're under the gun, you're trying to meet the deadline. So we're kind of ahead of the game with this one.
Yes. Proposals were included in your packet to give you all a timeline of what we're thinking. If they are approved for release this evening, then the proposals will be going out on Monday, April 30th, with them being due back the 31st of May. Between that time period and June, we would be reviewing that data, and then going out, if we feel it is in our best interest to do a best and final with the top carriers. We would bring those, that information back to the council either late July or no later than August 14th, which is probably the earliest we've done it in a very good number of years.
We were pushing September 15th by the time we approved this last time.
One of the goals would be that before your budget is delivered to you all, we would have good firm data in case.
Okay. Mr. Crisp, any questions?
No.
Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mayor.
Ms. Carrasco?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I'll entertain a motion for part A.
Mayor, I make a motion to authorize Carlisle Insurance Benefit Consultants for the City of Alice to coordinate the RFP process for Employee Benefits Program, Medical.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion carries as stated. And now, part two, which would be B, C, D, and?
E.
E. Where is E? Yes, E.
Mayor, I make a motion to authorize Carlisle Insurance Benefits Consultants for the City of Alice to coordinate the RFP process for ancillary dental, vision, and life. Second.
The whole thing?
It has to be the whole thing.
The whole thing. Maybe, B, C, D, and E.
Okay, sorry. I just read the bottom there, sorry. Fully insured group dental insurance, fully insured voluntary vision insurance, group term life insurance, and voluntary supplemental life insurance for the City of Alice.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay. Motion stands as stated. Thank you, Council. Agenda item number five. Here's status report on March 2018, month-ending financial statements and summary of funds.
We've got our Director of Finance, Mr. Rollo Ramos, is going to give us an update on the financial statements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Rollo.
We're at the midway point from October through March, this is six months. Time flies when you're having fun. General fund revenues is $6,201,485, and that's about 53%, so it's a little bit over, you know, the 50% at this point. We'll start with the property tax. Property tax, year-to-date budget was $1,362,246, and year-to-date collection is $2,499,483, which is about 92% of the total budget. So we're doing real good with the property tax collections. Just so you can see, as far as the appraisal district, and of course, this was received April 10th, so it's not included on this one, but just so, to give you an idea where we stand with the total tax levy for 2017, that was $4,265,148, or 49. And year-to-date collected is $3,739,307, so it's about 87.4% that we've collected of the total tax levy. Sales tax, year-to-date budget was $2,640,000, and year-to-date collected actuals is $2,32,345. We added a color here that's not in your chart. This is the suggestion that Mr. Sparsa right here. What it is, this gives us the, to compare apples to apples, the four-month midpoint. Since the sales tax here is for six months, and we're lagging two months behind most of the time, this color right here shows you what the four-month midpoint is. In other words, we budgeted $440,000 per month. You multiply that by four, it gives you $1,760,000 per month, but our actual collections is $2,32,345. So that's a difference of $272,345. So we're in the positive or above what the budget is through the four-month period. We've actually received, as shown on Exhibit C, we've actually received through February already, and again, this is not reflected on the financials, but we've already received it. So to show you, 2018 budget was $2,200,000 from October through February, but the actual is $2,530,664. So that's a positive increase of $330,664. On Exhibit D, we compare 2018 actual to 2017 actual. 2018 actual was $2,530,664, and 2017, through this time period, again, October through February, was $2,053,030, which is an increase of $477,634. So as you can see, the sales tax has been doing very well, it's strong. Our occupational and mixed beverage, again, we receive this quarterly. We're at 29% of the budget. Franchise licenses and permits is at 31%. Our intergovernmental is at 44. Charges for services is at 33%. Fines and forfeitures, municipal court has been doing very good with the revenues there. That one is at 69% of the budget. So again, we should be at 50, so that one's 69%. Miscellaneous revenue is a little bit over, it's at 52%, and your intergovernmental transfers is right at 50%. We go to general fund expenditures on Exhibit E. It's $5,651,613 year-to-date, and that's at a 49%. So our expenditures are a little bit under the 50% mark. I'll just highlight a few of the major ones. Finance administration is under. The fire department's a little bit over, they're at 51%, as opposed to the 50% on the expenses. Police department is under 50%. Street maintenance is a little bit over, 52%. And garage is under. Parks and playgrounds is under, and libraries under the budget. So for the most part, you know, they're all within budget, except for a little bit over. The revenues and expenditures for all, and expenditures for all major funds, we have the general fund, which has a profit of $549,872. I was looking at the 2017 figures, just to compare. Back in 2017, for the same time period, we're in the negative $241,868. So that's over $790,000 turnaround, but the general fund has done a lot better than we were last year at this same time period. Solid waste, we're at a profit of $18,955. You recall, last month, I presented a loss there, $30,000, a little over 30, so we're doing a little bit better in solid waste now. The utility fund is at $308,936, at a loss. It came down a little bit from last month. I think last month, we were like 380 or something like that, so it's come down a little bit. We're still hoping that the consumption in the summer months, the peak summer months, will help that fund out, and we're also trying to minimize some of the expenses there. Maintenance and construction has been pretty busy, but then we got some problems out there, so they're working on quite a bit of work, they have quite a bit of work. Airport, $7,109 in the black. Golf course is $24,026 in the negative. We haven't started hitting our peak months in the golf course either. There's some spring tournaments that are scheduled, so we're hoping that in the next month or two, that one also will turn around. Hotel occupancy tax fund is $30,966 in the negative, and your multi-use complex is $53,720 in the negative. Now, the auditorium, the water park will open for the first time on Saturday, so this Saturday, so, and then there's some parties that are scheduled, and after-school parties and so forth, so hopefully, that'll help the auditorium in the next few months. That's it. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Council, any questions? Mr. Crisp? Mr. Burke?
The two departments, you mentioned streets and fire department over budget, what do you attribute that to, in a general?
The fire department had a little bit of overtime, that they had to incur, firemen being off and so forth, that it was conflicting and under schedule. And the second was, you mentioned the street. I think there was... It looks like some of those are the repair and maintenance supplies. And it's, I think it was 52% where we're supposed to be at 50, so it's a little bit over there.
Any other questions? Mr. Burke?
No, thank you.
Ms. Carrasco?
Yes, I wanted to ask on the increase that we show, or 68.19, for the, is that the fines and forfeitures? Was that attributed to the roundup?
When I spoke to Ms. Ramondo and Ramondo, the roundup was very successful, but it was about the same amount of revenues as last year, she mentioned. So it's just that, and I can't say that it's attributed... So it's just that, and I can't say that it's attributed to that only. It was a successful roundup, but there's just the warrants that they're doing, the roundup. Not only the roundups, the regular warrants that they run monthly and the collections. That's most of it.
I see that warrants are doing a lot better.
They're doing a lot better. They're running them.
Warrants. So they're more successful. I see success on a daily basis on the call log.
Right, that's basically what I want to say. It's not just the roundup necessarily, but the regular.
It's attributed to several.
Daily, yes.
Somebody doing a good job?
I wanted to ask you on the property tax. You said that we're at 91.74 in collections. Do you, I don't know if you touched on it, I can't remember right now, I'm sorry. But where were we around this time last, you know, with collections at this time? Yeah? On the property taxes?
I think on the property tax. I don't have the specific one on the property tax for 2017, but I do have where we were at general fund revenues, and we're at 53 percent last year. Where, so it's basically in line with this year's revenues. Property tax itself, I couldn't tell you, except the fact that the general fund was at a loss during this time last year.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Total tax, the 53 percent that I'm giving you is total collections for the revenues.
I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Mr. Chris?
Yeah, sorry. In regards to the same thing on property tax, the 51, I'm sorry, the 90, sorry, 90, what is it? 93 now? 91.3 percent?
91.74.
Yeah, that one, that percent there, I started reading another percentage just a minute ago. That is what we actually budgeted, which was not 100 percent of the revenues, right? Because right now, we're only at, what's it, 87 percent or 87 something?
The total tax levy, yes.
Yes, so what did we, I'm trying to remember what we actually budgeted percentage-wise of the total.
Was it 93 or 92?
92. So it seems like we're still on track for a good, we're already at the 80. What was it, 80-something? It's going to have a slow growth, 87.4, which is still going to have a slow growth moving forward, but we're getting there, the same way we did last year. Okay. That's why I was trying to remember what that percentage was.
Now, this, your total budget on the property tax, it does take it and divide it into the 12 monthly payments.
Right.
So that's why it kind of looks, 92 percent looks really high. But of course, from now till the end of the year, we're not expecting a whole lot more.
Yeah, we should only get that last.
It trickles, it's going to trickle.
Four hundred thousand versus the, yeah, $2 million. Okay. That was it, that was it.
Any other questions, counsel? No? Okay.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Thank you. And your department, you've done a great job, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, agenda item number six. Consider and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice to amend the fiscal year 2017 through 2018 budget to appropriate hotel occupancy tax reserves for permissible uses and authorize the expenditure of up to $65,000 to improve the City of Alice recreational fields.
Mayor, on this item, we looked at it several times, and on like the fifth look, we questioned whether one section, whether we qualified to use these funds based on one section. So we wanted to take it back to have legal look at it again, so I'd ask that we table this item.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to table it.
Mayor, make a motion to table it, in item number six. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, the ayes have it, we'll table it. And I really would like to see it on there.
Yes, me too.
Pretty quick. Okay. Agenda item number seven. Consider and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice, setting a budget allocation to transfer $65,000 currently in Fund 14, park capital improvement projects, and utilizing those funds for the establishment of a skate park fund, for the development and construction of a skate park, authorizing the expenditure of said funds and utilizing a vendor's list on by-board or other state contract service.
Mayor, I'm going to have Community Development Director Josh Flotus speak on this one. And just to be clear, I mean, we're calling this a skate park, but you know, when you look at what you have on there, it's equipment that's kind of in addition to Veterans Park. And so it's something, we kind of look at it also like swing sets and things that we have at the park, because it's, I mean, there's not a lot, there's no moving parts to it. But just to preface that with, the name skate park kind of sounds like it's a big facility or something like that, when it's not.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel.
Good evening.
In 2008, $50,000 was transferred into Fund 14 for park capital improvement projects. In subsequent years, another $15,000 was transferred into that fund for a total balance of $65,000. As the city manager mentioned, the addition of this area would enhance on the existing Veterans Park area that's located in the middle of town. It's on 8.2 acres, has restrooms and lighting, and adequate parking as well. It would utilize an otherwise dead space in the park system. As recently as 2011, it was part of the city's five-year parks plan. It was one of the suggestions that was brought up in that plan to proceed forward with. On September 26 of 2017, the city council authorized the application of the City of Alice to participate in a local park grant program. In March of this year, we spoke to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, and the skate park project did not make the list of projects funded by the state, and the state of Texas was still waiting on their federal funding as well. The city had applied for $35,000 in grant and was providing that $45,000 in matching funds would have come from this Fund 14. The proposed park would be utilized to use a by-board vendor or other vendor from a state contract service to develop, construct, and maintain this area, as well as signage for the construction in this slab to be built on as well. In the packet, particularly on area, for page 98, you'll have the aerial map. So this will give, get you a better point of view as far as where we've pinpointed where this would be at, be located. You can see the parking lot where the old carnivals used to be during the Fiesta Bandana. So this would be next to that area, again, utilizing a space that otherwise wasn't being used. On the next page, page 99, will give you the site location as far as its reference to the City of Alice on the whole. And on page 100 is a sample of park rules that have been used in the past. When I first met with the Public Works Director in the City of Robstown two years ago to discuss how they develop their skate park and the processes they put in place, these are the rules that they did post at their park. So this is just as a sample and guidance for the council as we consider action on this item. Beginning on page 90 are a couple of renderings that were provided to us by the by-board vendor I've been in contact with, American Ramp Company. These renderings are specific to the slab we're looking to place at this park, and both do have their quotes as well. The quotes do not include the cement slab.
Okay. Counsel, any questions, Ms. Kadasco?
Yes. You said on here, on the quotes that we have, the two that we have.
Yes, ma'am.
You said it does not include the concrete.
It does not, we're estimating that that would be an additional $15,000.
$15,000?
Yes, ma'am.
So we would add that to $65,000?
Or the $42,000, yes, ma'am.
Or 42?
Yes, on page 96 is the other proposal for design, 6455. That one said a $42,724.
And you're thinking concrete $15,000?
Yes, ma'am. However, in speaking to this vendor, they also did state, you know, whatever the approved budget would be, they would design with slab to fit our budget.
And all based on by-board, so.
Based on by-board.
Yeah.
And you know, one thing that we need to keep in mind too, is that when it was presented for the grant, we did have letters of support, and we did have letters of, you know, just a few vendors approached throughout the community that were willing to contribute. So I don't foresee a problem actually gaining extra funds to assist in this. You know, I've talked to a few vendors, I mean, not vendors, companies here in town, and just patrons that are willing to contribute towards this facility. It's something that's been in the talk since 90, or 80-something. Michael and I were talking about when it first came before, not council, but was brought up in the city, almost 30 years ago, 40 years ago now, so.
So what you're saying is if it went above the $65,000?
I don't foresee us having an issue getting it. The other thing too, is, and I know that this is not what, you know, ideal, is being on the by-board, there are financing options too that can reduce our cost. I think that if we went the full route of financing it, from what I was reading, is about a $1,500 a month payment. That's if we financed every penny of it, through this company, ARC, and their purchasing process. Now, I'm not saying to do that, I'm just saying that there are options there to actually be able to allow us to get a facility, a completed facility, for a minimal cost that would be able to get it done for the community and the kids, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Kadasco, do you have more questions?
I just have one, because if I can recall, this was brought up last time. Did we say we were going to go back and have the, was it, the neighbors or the surrounding area to open it up or open public hearing?
To get some input into the design.
I wasn't sure if that was.
Yes, ma'am. I would still like to do that, to invite the public to look over the design of it and give some input as well, if we can.
So this is kind of going backwards then?
I think that we submitted a design that was helped, that was assisted by the city to them, and they said in order to fit, you know, they designed skate parks for a living, that they came back with these two designs to best utilize the area that we're trying to.
She's talking about the neighbors, like the people.
The people around there.
Because we were going to.
I thought we had mentioned that the last, I wasn't sure if we had, or.
And fencing, are we going to have to do fencing, because we're going to close the park?
No, we don't have to do fencing, no. And then the park would be opened, as the other parks would be subject to ordinance, which would, by 10:00 PM, everybody would have to leave.
Okay. So no, I mean, like the rural state closed and wet or raining, so if they didn't read it and they broke a leg, then it's their fault.
Right, and then I believe there's Texas chapter code that cited there as far as the liability waiver on that.
Okay. So I guess PD would have to monitor it, like.
They already do. I have seen patrol there at Veterans Park anyhow.
Better than it was, because it wasn't?
So they do patrol that area.
So I'm kind of confused with the entire price. Like, okay, it's $65,000, but then you're saying that we needed additional, so in addition to the 65, is that what you're saying?
It doesn't include the, 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 the $65,000 is what is in that Fund 14. So that would be what we would use to start this fund. Now, budgeting and moving forward, it would be, getting with the by-board, getting with, you know, sponsors or donors to actually move forward and everything, but this actually starts our fund and moves forward with actually creating a park for our kid, our community. I keep saying kids, but I mean, there's grownups that actually do this stuff too. And this isn't just necessarily a park, like he said, it's an extension of a park that we already have, you know, and it would be basically the equivalent of what we have and, of what they have in Robstown.
Right.
You know, we're not building a professional facility here. We're building something that the community can enjoy, and they could have the right to actually skate, which ordinances in the City of Alice basically make it illegal to skateboard on anything but your own owned property.
Correct. So, Josh, so Fund 14, could we not use that fund for the parks that need a lot of work right now, like our baseball parks?
My understanding was on the park capital improvement project, that as it is right now, it was funded specifically to help for grants, for matching funds for grants.
But we won't have a grant.
Right, this won't be, this would be, part of the agenda item would be to create a skate park, skate park fund funded from Fund 14.
But.
But we didn't get the grant.
No, so, I mean, no, these funds, Roland's there, just to clarify, they can be moved, I mean, you can move them to wherever they would want to move them. This is creating, this is just creating the skate park fund and then authorizing the expenditure of it, but it's completely up to all whether you want to spend it on skate park. It's just, but the funds are there, they're budgeted for. And they're not specific, they were specific for a park capital improvement projects, and so matching grants, matching funds for that. So that's why they're looking to take it out of there and put it into a skate park fund, and then utilize those funds to build the facility. But if you wanted to use it for something else, you certainly could. It would just be a separate agenda item, however you wanted to do it.
It's just the condition of our parks concerns me, our baseball parks that are currently in use.
And I understand that too, but for what we can do, some maintenance, and we're looking at other options in order to get this done, for facilities that currently exist, we can build a new facility, something that has never been offered before, and be basically done with it. And there's no more real out-of-pocket cost moving forward. Or we can do the maintenance that we potentially have the option of finding moving forward. So, you know, for what we've got here, we can give something new to a community. You know, that's my take on it.
I'm just, I just caught pictures just last night on our parks, and that's why it's fresh on my mind. And that's packed with kids right now, the Little League parks. I would love it too, but it's one of those things, at this point, where would the funds be most beneficial to a larger population of people actually utilizing already? And safety. I know that we have some bleachers that, to me, aren't safe. I wouldn't want my kid playing around them. It's a concern to me.
We do have new bleachers. We have been lacking of a welder for the City of Alice, that's getting, taking care of as we speak now. There are bleachers that have been identified to be disassembled, those would be the higher stack bleachers. It's at Pee Wee, Little League, it's also at the East Field at Anderson Park, so those will be replaced by the new aluminum bleachers. We currently have eight sets now. So every one of those high-rise bleachers will be replaced by two of the new aluminum.
When, Josh?
We're just waiting on, working on some logistics with Public Works so that we can team up on it together.
And where's that money going to come from?
Well, we already have the bleachers, that was put into this year's budget.
And I know there's an electric pole connected to one of the bleachers, so we'll need an electrician to remove it and figure out where we're going to do electricity. So where is that money going to come from?
We have quotes for the electricity for moving those boxes, and then there is a fund for the, in the parks budget currently, that still has funds enough to pay for that.
What fund is that coming out of, for the improvement now, that we need, know we need now?
Parks, the line item for the electrician, which, minor equipment, small tools, it would be.
If you're going to hire an electrician, it's your repair and maintenance, and it's like a facility, that's the, but when you're shopping with a motel, what do you do?
That's what the prior agenda item was.
So, I mean, the potential is still there, but the potential is still there. We're acting like something doesn't exist that we can potentially.
I almost feel like we shouldn't move here if we couldn't do that first one.
Yeah, the potential's there, I'm not looking, man, well, that's a separate agenda.
I truly am concerned for our kids that are currently using the parks now, that are out there. There's a, I drive by there every day, and I just got pictures yesterday of metal sticking out and.
And there's pictures in our packet too, of that exact same stuff.
What stuff?
Of those metals that you're talking about, the stuff that was going to be worked on.
What, it's in our packet?
Yeah.
I must have missed it. What page?
Well, we're going back to, we're backing up on the agenda items, but it's.
The pictures from like the Pee Wee and the.
Yes.
Those.
Beginning on page 63.
But we, but there was no action taken, so it's null and void right now.
They're still in our packet, so I'm saying you had them as.
But it's null and void.
Friday from last week, you said you got them yesterday.
No, no, I didn't get these, I got some from a concerned citizen.
Yes.
That does Pee Wee leagues. I didn't get this. That's just my concern, that we currently have concerns. And not that I don't like this, I love this idea. However.
If you want, on the previous agenda, I mean, and as it relates to this, because we're talking about those other funds as well, because I know that agenda's passed, but I don't, I don't think the probability is there that we'll be able to use it and.
You don't think so, John? You don't think so, John?
That, no.
Okay.
The short answer is no, because of, you know, we've had some questions from the community in those regards, and while you might be able to fudge a little bit, but if it's put under scrutiny, scrutiny, and you can't, it can't hold up to that scrutiny, what we don't want to have to happen is that a complaint made and then us have to reimburse the hotel motel funds from our general fund to make up for that. There might be some, some, what I like to call legal gymnastics that we can do to get to a point, like maybe historical site, that we have to, we weren't looking at it like that, we weren't looking at how we have to qualify it and those types of things, and, you know.
Did you read the recreational part on, on that tax code?
I, I actually got it sitting in front of me right now, and the problem is that we don't hit the population. We're not a community that's adjacent to Mexico, and, and, you know, that's, that's one of the principal areas that we have, and then, and that was the provision that we were going under, and I think that is.
I thought, I, I, I'm sorry, John, but I thought, I thought that, that that Juan had actually got a ruling on, I, I was just thinking about this earlier, that Juan had actually got a ruling or an email from the State Comptroller in regards to this when we started talking, because initially, we had talked about, okay, can it build a new facility like this park, or this facility they were talking about, now the skate park? And he had got a ruling that it was no, and it stated that it could be used for, in our community for things like this capital improvement. That's what I thought, that that letter had come in from Juan, so that's why I'm like, I still think the potential's there, even though, because that come from the State Comptroller.
Here's, here's the subdivision, and it was provided in those packets that we're looking at. In subsection seven, subchapter B of the statute, and you all have been provided certain portions of it that are highlighted. And it's got, sub-sub, you've got sub-paragraph seven, A, B, and A, the municipality owns a facility or fields, which clearly we do, and then B, municipality, and this is where the violation rule is going to play. And the one that closest fits our, our level actually is four, sub-sub four, which has, has a population of at least thirteen thousand, less than thirty-nine thousand. However, we not our county, we are not locating a county that has a population of at least two hundred thousand. Now, the one that we were looking at applying is sub-paragraph six, Roman numeral six, sub-sub six, where it says it's located in a county that is one, A, is adjacent to the Texas-Mexico border, has a population of at least five hundred thousand, which we do not, and does not have a municipality with a population greater than, than fifty thousand. And so our county is nowhere near five hundred thousand, while we would easily comply with C, we do not comply with, with A or B of that, and.
Does it have to be all three?
Yes, yes, and that, and just generally, when you look at the reading of the statute, it's got A is adjacent to the Texas-Mexico border, B has a population of at least fifty thousand, and.
Got it.
And so, just in reading of it, and so, it's one of those things about we can want it as much as we, you want one hand and.
How about seven? Oh, we're not twenty-five thousand.
And so, it's, it's, it's tricky, and, and it's not that, that staff hasn't been looking at it real hard, trying to figure it out, and we've looked at it, and it's just, we have some questions come up in the community and some concerns, and we just want to be certain that
Correct.
don't run into a problem.
Have to pay it back. So that's not an option then, to use that to fix our current problems?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to be an option, and that's why, you know, we were gonna, if we wanted to get a, send this off to comptroller exactly, you know, with our specs, I mean, if they, if they, if they gave us an opinion, it could have been whether it can be used to renovate the parks or, you know, some, but when we get specific as to, you know, the size of a town and the county, you know, we, or see the attorney has the authority to, to make that determination whether we interpreting this.
Correctly.
Municipal code, tax, tax code.
I just, I currently have an issue with our current problems, and that's where I stand on that. I, I feel they're dangerous, and I'd like to see them fixed before we move on to something else, that's just a comment.
If we were to consider doing that, the forty-one, and then trying to, on this one, doing the forty-one thousand dollar plan or the bid, the quote, and then perhaps raising some other funds for the concrete?
Yes, ma'am.
And then have the remainder of what?
Right.
Because it's my, it was wood rot?
Yes, ma'am, on the scope of work for the agenda item number six, I don't recall what page it is right now, but the two pages, a lot of it is woodwork. A lot of it is woodwork, and then, of course, the bleachers that we need to disassemble and replace with the new aluminums. But yeah, it's a lot of rot, weathering, and.
Well, painting.
Yeah.
Have we gotten quotes settled on any of that? Have we gotten quotes on any of that, like what we need to do?
For the materials, yeah, I have.
I wonder if we could just revisit that, like I would think, before we move on to something.
If we were able to set aside, like do the forty-one, and still move forward with that, and still have some funds available to where we could go back and do the wood, the painting.
I'd rather have that presented first, so that we know what it's gonna cost. That's just the way I do business, I'd rather know how much we're gonna have before we spend it. Especially because it's, in my eyes, it's dangerous, what we currently have.
Joshua, the bleachers you have, Joshua, are they to replace all the bleachers we have problems with right now?
We have eight sets, so that's enough to replace the ones.
Enough to replace them.
Yes, ma'am.
Why haven't we done that, Josh?
We're waiting on a bigger plan that would encompass other work to the facilities, painting, electrical. We have been working on other quotes, and we had a gentleman that go, went out and checked all the fields and got us more or less the cost for the supplies for these, what we would need. Lighting as well, we're looking at options for that, on retrofitting some lighting at these parks also. So it was part of a larger plan for these parks.
But, and you have put some rope or caution tape or something around the dangerous.
Yeah, on East Field, the, the bench sitting atop of the score booth on that one bleacher had been vandalized, so parks had put caution taper on that bench.
But we're, we've kicked off Little League season yesterday, so it's in full swing. That's my concern, the now, and the safety of our citizens. I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
The, the wood, the, your, the price on, that you estimated would be in the wood rot and things of that sort. What was that price that you had?
Well, we, I believe it was ten thousand dollars.
What, just buying the wood?
For the wood and the supplies, the screws, the bolts, everything else you would need as well.
Who's gonna install, who's gonna do the work?
Well, we have a contractor here we can use, he would charge us by the hour, and we would supervise the work if we went that route.
If, how long would it take you to get the bleachers up at the, at the proper facilities?
Just the time that it would take to coordinate with another department to get some assistance on disposal of what we're gonna disassemble, and also the welding to take it down.
So if we, if we're looking at not, not waiting to, from what I'm gathering here, we're looking at not waiting till we get the parks revamped, but let's get the, I mean, it's, it's, it's the parks crews that would be putting this up, but we need to dismantle first, and then.
Some assistance, yes.
I mean, are we thirty days away from that, you think, if we get the right, we, we need to have the welder, I know we hired one.
As soon as it would take to coordinate the efforts between the two departments.
We can get on that as quick as we can, I mean, we, we need to get on that quickly, and we can talk about that, on how we're gonna coordinate that, Josh.
But on the. In the spirit of, of being a steward of our money, I would rather us know exactly how much we're gonna use, and that way we don't incur more debt, because we're finally paddling, and I'd rather not incur more debt. I'd rather use what we've got to fix what we've got, and then at that point, come back and bring this back to council and, and maybe move forward at that time with what we have left, and then Mr. Crisp has maybe people that would donate, then we can actually have an amount of, of money. I just, I feel that our public safety is, is number one for me, and I, and I get hit on it all the time, but that's my stance. I believe the public should be safe, and as long as I'm mayor, I'm gonna fight for that every single day.
You know, and me personally, I feel like, I feel like, I agree, I agree, that's why we put the, the previous agenda item on here, you know.
But it's tabled.
Can I, can I talk?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. And I feel that, 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 you know, for posterity, I, I agree, you're right. I think that at this point, we need to reevaluate the letter that, that Juan got, reevaluate what can be spent and how we can utilize this to best serve. I mean, the full intent was that we were gonna have funds, there was an additional fifteen that we had talked about that was actually gonna go towards basically all the bleachers, and fifty thousand for ground, I mean, not for ground, for structural work, to actually, fifty thousand, not fifteen, sorry, fifteen, fifteen for the bleachers and fifty thousand, which added up to the sixty-five, to get us started before next year. So, you know, having got this last statement where, you know, the likelihood is, is less, you know, I, I, I hate the idea of it, but I understand, I mean, when there was potential, I, you know, but now that we have to review, I, I feel that, you know, we, we probably do need to, to, to reevaluate how we're gonna end up doing this, and the best ways to do it. Now, that's not to say that I'm gonna go out and try to start digging up some funds to make up one way or another for something, but, yeah.
Yeah, if you're interested, I mean, this one can be tabled also, and then we can bring back an authorization on, on utilizing funds for the, for the park improvements, but in the meantime, that doesn't prevent us from taking care of what we can
Right.
on the end of, of removing some of the, you know, this is gonna be for some of the woodwork that's rotten on some of the, you know, cages and things of that sort around the park, so we'll still get started with that, but we can bring this back as a, as a different agenda item if that's how the council pleases.
I would like to see that taken care of ASAP.
Unfortunately, I think that's the, I mean, that's the, the best course of action with what was dictated on the previous agenda item, so I'll make the motion since it was mine. I'm gonna make a motion if we table this agenda item.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you, council. Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number eight, consider and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Alice, Texas, Chapter sixty-two, Parks and Recreation, Article three, Golf Course, Section sixty-two dash one zero two.
Mayor, this is also gonna be under the Community Development Director, but to give you an idea, this is just allowing the administration to modify only green fees for special events or, 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 you know, kids or veterans or, or something like that from on a, and on an as-needed basis, but strictly just green fees, because we have a trail fee, we also have a cart fee, but those won't, this doesn't give authority to change any of those, and Josh is gonna speak about that as well.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this ordinance was last amended on September second, twenty-fourteen, at that time reflecting a fee increase. The current language, the section sixty-two one oh two, requires that any changes to the golf course fees in totality must come to the City Council for consideration. The request to allow administration, City Manager and the Director to provide for special rates, promotions, special event rates or discounts will help the City of Alice market the municipal golf course and maximize our potential for revenue. Specifically, this would be for the green fees, you know, the trail fees, and again, the cart fees would continue to pay for themselves for that lease that we have in that agreement, this would be on green fees. I know discounts can sound a little scary on paper, but what that's more appealing to would be like a veterans discount or age sixty-five and up discount, we would have that flexibility.
Summer discounts for, for kids as well during the summer hours and, and stuff like that.
Discounts for golfing after a certain hour. We can also run special events for winter Texans, we can run special events for specific groups, educators, realtors, whatever it may be, first responders, and run more promotional activity at the golf course with utilizing that flexibility.
Okay, council, any questions, Mr. Crisp?
Yeah, a quick, quick question, on the first page of the ordinance itself, it says the daily green fees, it says Monday through Friday. We're not changing days of operation, right, just fees? Because it does say Monday through Friday.
Yeah, this doesn't affect the operations, this is just adding to specifically, sixty-two one oh two, council, excuse me, just on page one oh five in the highlighted areas, it's taking care of a couple of issues there. The numbering was off, so that had been remedied, and number six is more broadened to read that the cart fees and trail fees are subject to change by the City of Council. Green fees are subject to change by the City Manager and Director with public notice communicated across the City of Alice website, public service channel, and social media services. Personally, as it had read, it'd be fees would be changed to the City Council without notice. That's the, that's the change to this code, the proposed change.
Okay.
That's it.
Mr. Burke, any questions?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Carrasco? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion at this time, council.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, upon approval, ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Alice, Chapter sixty-two, Parks and Recreation, Article three, Golf Course, Section sixty-two, one oh two, fees.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number nine, consider and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Alice, Texas, Chapter seventy-eight, Article three, Wastewater, Division two, Industrial Waste, Section seventy-eight through one seventy-four, requirements for traps to provide for a variance to trap requirements.
Mayor, these next nine, ten, eleven are also gonna be with our Community Development Director. These are coming forward to, to allow us to, to give variances, it'll help for business development, also in some mixed-use areas, we need some, some, some flexibility in older areas of town, and, and Josh will speak to it, but one of the engineering consultant firms that we have, we do contract with them, Bureau Veritas.
It's our inspections consultants, Bureau Veritas, and Veritas met with staff a few weeks ago with our inspections group, and we talked about, okay, what problems do you have, what do you face the most? And their guidance is, they serve seventy municipalities, and the gentleman that we had come out here to meet with us, Gregory Hallmark, stated that in a lot of those municipalities, that the administration has the ability to grant a variance. If taken into effect, as it states in the narrative, the determination on sizes, and this has been something that's been coming up a lot with the grease trap receptors, but not treating a sandwich shop the same way you would churches fried chicken, because you're, you're dealing with different levels of grease and fats and oils. Again, it protects our infrastructure, we're still requiring some protection, but we're able now locally to have the ability to say, you know, business say, you're gonna do sandwiches, we will structure the certificate of occupancy to state that specific purpose for the restaurant. We come back a year later, and if the codes finds that now it's a chicken place, well, we'll have to address that and fix that and work with the business owner to modify the receptor. So this gives us that flexibility, and again, does help, it really does, and it would help also existing restaurants now who are expanding or thinking about building.
Very good. Council, any questions? Mr. Crisp, Mr. Burke?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Carrasco? No? I'm very happy to see that. Council, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Alice, Chapter seventy-eight, Article three, Wastewater, Division two, Industrial Waste, Section seventy-eight dash one seventy-four, requirement for traps to provide for a variance to trap requirements.
Very good, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion stands as stated, thank you. Agenda item number ten, consider and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Alice, Texas, Appendix A through zoning, Chapter eight through, or off-street parking, Section eight, two, eight one, to provide for a variance to off-street parking.
So Mayor and Council, this is another item to help with development, particularly focusing on the downtown district and the older areas of town. For instance, the old Gibson's building down, if I were to acquire that building and remodel, I'd be required by the International Code to have a certain amount of ADA spaces, certain amount of parking spaces. The availability for parking in downtown, as we know, is very little, so having difficulty conforming to that, and again, speaking with Veritas and the guidance that we have from some of the other municipalities. that we have from some of the other municipalities they work with, it would be ideal to give the building official and the director the ability to review case-by-case basis to allow for a grandfathering of sorts for older buildings. Another good example would be, um, a small business down here that does the title business. If they were to expand next door, they'd be required a certain amount of parking spaces as it's currently written. Where this would help, council, we'll go through it just a little bit. Page one nineteen of your packet, it would be adding A, paragraph A, under the table. Paragraph would read that the building official of the City of Alice and the director may grant a variance to this code, making such determinations on a case-by-case basis. The proprietors of any establishment and/or homeowners requesting a variance must do so in writing to the director. Uh, the director and building official will have by, five business days to respond to such requests. Uh, if the variance isn't granted, they can appeal to the board of adjustments.
Very good. Ms. Carrasco, any questions? Mr. Burke?
No.
Mr. Crisp?
That's great.
That's great. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move for approval of the ordinances amending the code of ordinances, City of Alice, Appendix A, zoning, Chapter eight, off-street parking, Section eight-one, to provide for variance to off-street parking. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion stands as stated. Thank you, council. Agenda item number eleven, consider and act upon an ordinance of the City of Alice amending the code of ordinances, City of Alice, Texas, Appendix A, zoning, Chapter ten, fence regulations, Section ten through three, use, use regulations to provide for a variance for determinations for fences to conform to the existing fences in the subdivision or neighborhoods.
Mayor and council, again, in meeting with staff and our Bureau Veritas contractor, uh, the issue of fence use and specifically to the R-one family district has been of, uh, of frequency. Uh, by frequency, some specific examples is, I've received a couple of calls, uh, in my tenure there thus far. The reasoning for putting a fence in their front yard is to protect either their children, grandchildren or pets. And seeing how, if the proposed fence does conform to the subdivision or the neighborhood and bearing in mind that there is no threat to public safety in the construction of said fence, we don't have a problem issuing a variance to allow a fence in the front property of an R-one residential district. Again, meeting those requirements. Um, similar to the other ordinances that have just passed, this would have to be in full agreement between the building official and the director unanimously. The homeowners requesting the fence would need to do so in writing. Um, if we do decide to decline, they may still appeal to the board of adjustments.
And also, th- this would be, uh, allowing, um, if there's fences in the neighborhood that are just like that, allows for something of that sort, or if an R-one is in a mixed use, uh, it would allow for, uh, for, to be able to have a variance for a fence also. But if the neighborhood does not have any front yard fences, then it would not be approved.
That's great.
Council, any questions? Mr. Crisp?
Okay, so, so let's say a specific neighborhood comes through and they, and there is no fences, but four out of the five are, you know, on the block or whatever, a large group of them actually come in and all apply and want the variance. Would that be something reconsidered? I mean, I mean, I'm just trying to think outside the box here because, I mean, yeah, if one person comes and the neighborhood doesn't have it, but if the whole neighborhood comes and says, hey, we all have dogs and they're out in the yard, yada, 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 you know, just whatever. I'm just thinking outside the box, it'd be something definitely that'd have to be considered.
Um, and, and, you know, the, that could happen, but, uh, if you're in a subdivision and there's subdivision ordinances or if you have, uh, if there's deed restrictions on, on there also that could come into play. Um, but, um, we're looking at mainly, um, some of the, um, older areas of town that, that have fences already and somebody builds a house here and they wanna put their chain link and we say, no, you can't because we don't allow it on R-one and it's, but the neighbor has a chain link fence there and so that's what this is more geared to. Um, or, and so I would think, uh, i- if, you know, that have to, that's a case-by-case basis, but if four people came forward in a neighborhood and it's a neighborhood of twenty, be like, no, there's no other fences.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, get with the other neighbors and see if you wanna a- allow it and, and, and work it that way. Um, but if you're also in an R-one and it's mixed use and you're the only R-one in that area or, you know, and, and within a certain amount of distance, you know, sure, we'll allow a fence to be built there as well.
That's it.
Okay, Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco?
No.
So, so what happens, like, if somebody has a fence that is, um, not six feet, if it's over, like, maybe they put something above the fence with a sign or something with that? How would we handle that?
If I'm not mistaken, fence length along the sides of a property may be up to seven feet. In the front of the property, depending on the area where it's at, if it's, if it's flush with the home, that may also be six or seven feet. But in the front of the property, um, I think the maximum height for that is four feet.
So, okay, so for example, just say, I have great neighbors, it's not my neighbors, but say I had a, a neighbor that put this giant fence and then put something on top of the fence and it had a big sign that was on top of the fence. So now it's however tall and I called you or I called the city and I said, this is a problem according to the ordinance, it, it can't be more than six feet. Who would handle that or how would that be handled?
That sounds like it could be two violations. One of the signed ordinance in existence since about twenty-fourteen and also the fencing regulations. So that would be taken up through the board of adjustments.
Well, the code enforcement would go out there.
Well, sure, that's how it would start, but it would need to be remedied through the board of adjustments.
So the, the inspectors would go out there and say, you need to remove it?
Yeah. They would ask for the sign to be removed and then secondly, your fence is also not at the required height that it could be, it should be at per code.
And if they don't do it?
It'd be a civil matter.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Things like that happen?
It does.
Okay. Any other questions, council? No? Okay. Um, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of amending the code of ordinances, City of Alice, Texas, Appendix A, zoning, Chapter ten, fence regulations, Section ten-three, use regulations to provide for a variance for determination for fences to conform to existing fences in the subdivision or neighborhood.
Second. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion stands as stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Agenda item number twelve, discuss, consider and act upon authorizing the city manager to begin the procurement process for professional services, including but not limited to hazard mitigation and glow disaster recovery grants as they become available.
Thank you, Mayor. What I'd like to do is get authorization to start the procurement process of, of finding a professional grant writing organization. We, specifically, we're looking at, uh, the Harvey funds that are out there. There's a billion dollars out there that, that we need to try to get some money from. Um, that's a seventy-five, twenty-five matching, um, which could change. Uh, there's, uh, from talking to the, uh, to the people there, it's, um, it's likely, well, they didn't wanna even say that. They just said that there, that, uh, there's a potential that the twenty-five percent matching, uh, could be lowered, uh, even at that. But, um, we do have a, a grants person in-house, but, you know, we're, this is a more specialized, um, we are in a Harvey declared disaster area, so anything we put out there gets moved up to the top automatically for review. Uh, I think that, uh, we need to act on this pretty quick, um, because there's, there's, there's some grants that we can get for, for drainage, potentially for the levee as well. Uh, we have a hazard mitigation plan, um, that our interim, uh, fire chief has been working on and, um, there's just, there's a lot of potential and I think we're missing it. We need to outsource and, and this with a professional grant writing organization. And so I'm just looking for your approval to start that process.
Absolutely. Council, any questions? Mr. Crisp?
No.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco? Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to move for, um, approval of authorizing the city manager, uh, to begin the procurement process for professional services, including but not limited to hazard mitigation and, uh, glow disaster recovery grants as they become available.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion stands as stated. Agenda item number thirteen, discuss, consider and or act upon a resolution of the City of Alice authorizing the city manager to purchase a commercial vacuum truck utilizing a vendor, vendors listed on byboard or other state contract service, authorizing the financing of the vehicle via lease purchase contract with zero down payment and an interest rate not to exceed four point seven one four percent.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, we've been working on this for a while. I've been working with, um, Victor Sines and Joe Sines and also Roland on, on this issue. We're spending a lot of money on, on vacuum services. We have a lot of sewer lines that are, that are caving in. We're having to pump them regularly. Uh, to give you an idea, we spent sixty thousand dollars in, in two thousand eighteen. And, uh, so as, as, as we looked at those numbers, we figured we, we need to buy a truck. We're using it, uh, daily. We have a, a jet vac right now that we're using that, that clears clogs and also vacuums and that's getting used. So, um, we need something that we can utilize daily for the sewer, uh, for the sewer vacuuming that we have to do. And so we found a vendor that's on the byboard, um, and this is a, a, more so than anything, we're looking for a truck that was ready to go because we, you know, if we get it tomorrow, we're, it'll be in use, uh, tomorrow. And so this is a two thousand eighteen Peterbilt with a, um, it's got a four thousand gallon, uh, tank on it and, um, we also found financing for it. We, uh, talked to three companies, uh, Government Capital Corporation, uh, and that's why we, that's the first one we talked to. They had a four point seven one four percent. Uh, Wells Fargo declined because, uh, it, it, they, they wouldn't finance it something this, won't finance something this, uh, this, uh, small. It's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but it's, it's not enough for them to, to look to finance. And, um, um, we made contact with Bancorp South and they're offering us a two point five nine percent rate. Give you an idea, the annual payment on that is thirty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, it won't start until next year, a year from now, so it'll affect, uh, the next budget. Uh, we'll have the money in that budget because we're spending that money at, right now already. And, uh, even with an operator, we'll need a class B, um, class B operator. With the operator and the debt service payment, we'll still be cheaper than what we're paying right now on this, um, um, on the pumping. So I'm, I'm asking for authorization to, uh, to move forward with, uh, the purchase and also the, uh, the financing on this vehicle with Bancorp, uh, South. The, uh, oh, no, the reimbursement resolution is the next one. Okay.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Crisp?
Are you, uh, recommending, because the, the two that we have here, oh, that's Government Capital and you said to move forward with who?
Uh, the, the resolution that we have is, is, uh, Bancorp South and the, you should have the resolution, uh, I think they put it in, uh, separately with Bancorp. Should've been an attachment, uh, not in your binder.
Okay, here it is, yeah.
And we do have a relationship with them, correct, Roland? Yeah. That, uh, to give you an idea, the savings between Government Capital and Bancorp South is, is, uh, five thousand six hundred, five thousand dollars. Uh, so that's a significant amount of money. You know, we look at it that way, that's some money that could be applied to the parks, the savings.
Is this a five-year term or a? Seven-year?
Uh, this was five.
Five. It's, uh, just an annual payment, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco? Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to act upon, uh, a resolution of the City of Alice authorizing the city manager, city manager to purchase a commercial vac truck, um, through Bancorp Equipment Finance.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, and it looks like I need a roll call vote for this one. Uh, Mr. Crisp, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Burke?
Aye.
And Ms. Carrasco?
Aye.
Okay. Motion stands as stated. Moving on to agenda item number fourteen, discuss, consider and or act, and act upon a res- a resolution of the City of Alice expressing official intent to reimburse costs of city projects from taxes exempt obligations to be issued by the City of Alice and other matters related thereto.
Okay, Mayor, and this one applies to the, uh, previous item. What, what we're asking for is in, in case we do, um, get any bonds, um, for any of the sewer work that we're gonna do, that this is gonna apply to, we do, uh, we did talk to our financial advisor and they said that capital expenditure such as, uh, this truck would qualify to get reimbursed through a, a bond if we do get that. And so this has just given us that option. We don't have to exercise it, but it allows us to, to do that if, if we, if we need to in the future. And so I recommend approving this, uh, this resolution.
Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I, uh, sorry, sorry. Um, make a motion to adopt a resolution for the City of Alice expressing official intent to reimburse costs of the city projects from tax exempt obligations to be, sorry, I can't see, to be issued by the City of Alice and other matters related thereto.
I can a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? In favor, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion stands as stated. Okay. Agenda item number fifteen, consider and act upon confirmation of the appointment of Denise W. Straight as a commissioner to the City of Alice firefighters and police officers, civil service commission.
Uh, Mayor, um, we have, um, we have three commissioners and, um, a couple of them have served, uh, long terms. They're, they're in their third term, which, um, uh, we may wanna, uh, when their terms are up, of course, they can't serve more than three consecutive. Um, and we probably will be looking at changing some of the, our local rules on how that works. Uh, but we have a, an expired term that ended on two twelve, two thousand eighteen, but it carried over. And so, um, I'm looking to see if, uh, you guys will approve the appointment of Denise Straight to the commission, uh, of the civil service. Um, this is a city manager appointment, but it has to be approved by the council. And, uh, they can serve, can, uh, no more than three consecutive terms. They can hold over for, for a while and our city attorney, I've talked about that, uh, you know, it's not indefinite, but if, uh, for example, if one of the commissioners held over for a couple of months because we didn't appoint somebody, that would be fine. But if it went over for a year, then it wouldn't be fine, correct? Yeah. So, um, uh, we spoke to, to Mrs. Straight and, um, she's willing to serve and I think she'll be a good person for that, that commission.
Questions? Mr. Crisp?
We, we validated that, we, I mean, we've had a, an issue in the past, but we validated that she meets-
Yeah.
-all criteria?
Yeah.
And like you said, this, this is a, an appointment brought before us by you, same as, let's just say, a director and we would approve it there.
Mr. Burke?
No question.
Ms. Carrasco? Okay. Um, and, and can you clarify the, the terms again and how?
Sure. Um, the terms are three-year terms and, um, the, the commission member may not be reappointed to more than three consecutive terms, um, unless the council approves a fourth. Okay, so the other two commissioners, uh, the terms are gonna expire on, um, Mr. Gomez is gonna expire in two thousand nineteen and Mr. Montgomery in two thousand twenty. That time, they may, they couldn't serve, uh, another term unless it was brought forward and, and you guys approved it at that time. Um, we would be looking at changing, uh, and, and maybe looking at changing some of the local rules to maybe shorten that. Um, or, you know, it could even be something that, that could be brought forth, uh, you know, the idea of, of maybe one-year terms or two-year terms, but, uh, right now, this is, this is, um, the, uh, Section one forty-three Local Amendment Code and we can't be, um, we can be stricter than that, we just can't, we can't be less strict. So we can't change local rules to set it to be four years. We can change them to or one.
And, and that's only on tenure or, or like, uh, 'cause I know, um, a political person who's been in political office cannot-
Right.
-be in this, in this position. So, that stays, correct? That would stay?
Yes, yeah, you can't change-
It's just tenure that would-
Yeah, just tenure.
And we would change it by means of?
Local ordinance.
You would change your local-
Ordinance.
You would change that by-
Okay. So if we wanted to turn it into a, a one-year term or whatever. And so then, whenever we know that, um, their time, whatever their, their time is, it's up to who to bring that to council?
City manager.
City manager? Okay.
Well, the, the term they use is the, uh, chief executive of the municipality and here-
To the city manager.
For us, it would be the city manager.
So it would be up to the city manager to know that it's-
Right.
-expired and move on. Okay. Very good. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion at that time, at this time.
Mayor, I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Denise W. Straight, uh, as a commission, commissioner to the City of Alice firefighters and police officers, civil service commission.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion stands as stated. Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, consider and act upon approval of minutes for the meetings of April tenth, two thousand eighteen, September fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, July twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, July thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, June twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, June eighth, two thousand seventeen, June first, two thousand seventeen, May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, May twentieth- May twenty-fifth, 2017, May twentieth, 2017, May eleventh, 2017, April thirteenth, 2017, March twenty-ninth, 2017, and March ninth, 2017.
Mayor, this is the last of the minutes. The, the one, the July thirteenth minutes were handed to you all a little bit late, because it was, it was a six-hour meeting, is that right? And so our city clerk had to go and listen through that and make sure that the motions were accurate, and it's kind of hard to find where the motions are sometimes when you're looking at the video, so that was handed to you late. If you all haven't had time to review it, did they just get it here?
It was sent by email this afternoon.
Email?
Copy here this evening.
Okay. And that could be excluded for the next meeting, but, but we're caught up on minutes. And it feels good to be caught up on minutes.
Mr. Crisp?
The minutes brought back before us, I had watched it also, and they were correct, so we apologize for questioning those before in the last meeting, so, thank you.
Mr. Burke?
No.
Ms. Carrasco?
No.
I do have a question. So, like, if you can clarify, John, legal, I understand they're just minutes, and we're supposed to read them and just understand that that's what it states. What are the legal ramifications? As some of you all in here know, I am not comfortable signing minutes that I was not there for. So, I have chosen not to sign some of the minutes that I was not present for. So what are, in your legal opinion, what are any legal ramifications?
Sign them or don't sign them?
Sign them.
Sign them.
And then something comes back to this.
Now, all that this board has done, it's the minutes of the board, and just as part of your administrative duty as the mayor, you're effectuating what the council has voted on, and really what it goes to is what the council is doing. And the council is saying, when they approve the minutes, they're saying that, that these minutes are sufficient to become our public record as to what occurred in that particular meeting. And I guess, and what sort of ramifications, well, given the fact that we've got a recording, and that we've got a video of everything that's going on, it's not too difficult to amend or to change those minutes as we go forward. And so I don't think there's any limit, based upon what we've been doing, I don't think there's anything that you have to worry about if you sign some minutes and, oh my goodness, we've got a typographical error, a typographical here or there in the document. And I think that you guys have been pretty good in pointing out areas where you didn't feel that that was what had occurred. And that's council's job. And if council, when they approve it, then they're saying that everything's okay, and it's copacetic and inaccurate record, unofficial record. When you're signing on it, you're just effectuating their actions, so I don't think you personally have a
But I don't vote, so if I don't like the way they voted, and then I sign on it.
It doesn't matter, it's just like any ordinance. If you don't like the way they, if you don't like an ordinance that they passed, if you still are the mayor
Yeah, but these are minutes, not an ordinance. I can, I cannot agree with an ordinance, but the minutes are the minutes. And when legal, it comes to legal, I just, I'm uncomfortable with, I mean, these go back.
Well, it
But you can sign them, because you were there. So I'll just
It's just, it's just us saying that, me signing off and saying, council already voted and accepted this.
Yes, sir.
So
I guess I'm not a follower. Okay.
It's not about being a follower, it's about doing what you're voted to do.
Nope. Not in my opinion. Okay. So, council, I'll entertain a motion to pass the minutes of
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented, with the exception of the one correction that was put before us on paper. There the correction or whatever, from here for July thirteenth, 2017.
Okay.
I mean, I'm going to accept it, but it's in the agenda, it's in the packet separately. Let me correct what I'm trying to say, sorry. Yeah. No, I'm not trying to be, I'm just saying, because now I've kind of made it sound like I didn't accept this one.